Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening, especially Ruth today. And call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurley?
Here.
Trustee Lee?
Here.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Okay. We do have a quorum this evening. First item is public comment. Any member of the public wishes to address the board this evening? Now would be your time. Hearing none, we'll move on to item B, which is the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System Class 5 Certification. With that, I'll ask Engineer Wallers to come up to the podium.
Well, I am pleased to announce that the Village of Montgomery has been awarded the CRS rating Class 5, and it's a pretty rare privilege in Illinois. That's the highest rating that you can get in the program in Illinois, and so I think that's something to be proud of. I thought it might be good for just to spend a couple of seconds to talk about what the community rating system is, because some of you may not be aware of it, so.
I bet you are.
Thank you.
I got it.
Thank you. So, it's a program administered by the Federal Emergency Management Agency through ISO, the Insurance Services Office, and as you may recall, they also, ISO does our fire rating for insurance purposes, and this is the same type of program. It basically recognizes communities that go above and beyond what the standard regulations are. It's voluntary. There's 18 areas that the communities are graded on, and I'll talk about those in a minute. And it's a 10-class system. There's 500 points per class, and for every 5 percent, or for every class that you jump, it's a 5 percent. So, we'll get to this in a minute, but the significance of that, of this, is that people in Montgomery who have flood insurance get a 25 percent discount because the city or village has been awarded a CRS 5. So, that's pretty significant in terms of savings to those folks. So, these are the activities that you have to, that they score you on, and it covers the building department, the community development department, public works department, engineering department. So, everybody worked together to put the application together, and it's, I'll tell you, it's no small feat to put it all together. Building department was excellent. Mike Klupe does a great job. He's kind of the first line of defense for these, a lot of these items, and he does a great job of administering the program along with Jared Chipman and the community development department, and of course, Mike. And then I play a support role. EEI provides a support role. So, go to the next slide. Just continues, these are the other things that we do, and I think Montgomery, after the '96 flood, took a step back and said, you know, maybe we can do more to help avoid flooding. And you may or may not recall this, but Montgomery was the first community in either Kane or Kendall County to adopt a 0.1 CFS per acre release rate in both Wabonzie Creek and Blackberry Creek watershed. Now, later, those became the county ordinances, but initially, we led the way there. We also did a lot of work when the developments first came out in west, Lakewood Creek, Montgomery Crossings, all of those developments, to make sure that they were far enough outside the limits of the floodplain so that we didn't have any new houses brought into the floodplain. And as a result, when they've remapped those areas, thankfully, we don't have any communities or any homes in the floodplain. So, we've done a lot to head off and try to eliminate flooding as much as possible. So, Jeff, you can just go one back, please. There you go. So, just to give you some perspective nationwide, this is a list that was generated in 2010, but it also shows that the majority of the CRS classifications are in the, you know, the 9, 8, 7, 6 categories. There's fewer in 5, and there's virtually none in the 4, 3, 2, 1 category. So, again, something for the village to be proud of. And Jeff, last one. And then this just shows the premium discounts. So, with that, I'd like to present the plaque to the mayor, on behalf of community development, building, and public works, and engineering.
Okay.
I know that significant amount of staff time when involved with this, so obviously, this goes out to you guys, but the key, I'm standing over him now, but the key is that no other community in David, Illinois has a higher rating with the program, so it's really no small feat for me to accomplish.
With that, I would like to acknowledge a special guest that we have with us this evening, Ruth Diedrick Wagner. Ruth has the distinction of being Montgomery's most senior resident. A couple of years ago, I was privileged to attend her 100th birthday celebration, and she's now 102 and a half. Ruth was not born in Montgomery, but she has lived here since around 1930, when she married her husband Les. She still lives at the, in the house at Southeast River Road, where she moved as a new bride. In the years since, she has selflessly given of her time and talents to many community organizations. Ruth was selected as Grand Marshal of the Montgomery Fest Parade in 2003, in recognition of her many years of service. And tonight, we are pleased to honor her further with the following proclamation. And I'll read this, and then entertain a motion for approval.
Go.
I'll read the whole thing first.
Okay.
Whereas Elsie Ruth Armbruster was born in Nassau Township, August 7, 1912, to Herman and Hazel Armbruster, and graduated from East Aurora High School in 1930. Whereas Ruth and her first husband, Les, raised their son, Thomas, at the family home at the south, on Southeast River Road in Montgomery, where she still continues to live. And whereas, over the years, Ruth has provided invaluable service to the Aurora Wayside Crossboard, the Aurora Historical Society, Family Counseling Service, the Aurora YWCA, Jennings Terrace, Bardwell School PTA, The United Way, The Kiwanis, East Aurora School District 131, and First Presbyterian Church of Aurora. And whereas Ruth was named a YWCA Woman of Distinction in 1980, and whereas Ruth received the Aurora Kiwanis Service to God in Man Award, and whereas Ruth's devoted service to the community serves as an example for everyone to follow. And whereas Ruth will be receiving a Lifetime Achievement Award from the YWCA on April 30, 2015. Now, there I, for Matt Brawley, Village President, and the Village of Montgomery, do you hereby proclaim April 30, 2015, to be Ruth Diedrick Wagner Day in the Village of Montgomery, in honor of her many years of devoted community service, and in recognition of her receiving the Lifetime Achievement Award from the YWCA?
I make a motion.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes. If you guys could all join me for a round of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, move on.
We have a second proclamation to read this evening. Also important, but probably a lot less memorable. The proclaiming May 2015 as Rain Barrel Month in the Village of Montgomery. So, I'll read the proclamation, and entertain a motion. Whereas water is a valuable, limited natural resource on which residents in the Village of Montgomery depend for numerous home and commercial uses. Whereas conserving and protecting water supplies is of benefit to all residents of the Village of Montgomery. And whereas many residents are interested in methods to personally practice conservation of this valuable resource. And whereas for every 100 square foot of roof area, 1 inch of rain generates approximately 60 gallons of rainwater runoff. And whereas collecting rainwater is one type of best management practice to reduce stormwater runoff, and by redirecting and collecting rainwater runoff from buildings, it can be available for more productive, cost-effective uses. And whereas rain barrels are an economical, convenient method of collecting rainwater runoff for future uses. And whereas the Conservation Foundation and the Kendall County Soil and Water Conservation District, in cooperation with local communities, such as the Village of Montgomery, promote the reduction of off-site stormwater runoff and best management practices to redirect and conserve rainwater, and encourage homeowners and businesses to implement methods such as rain barrels to capture and efficiently use rainwater. And whereas the Village of Montgomery endorses such best management practices to help protect our local water resources, and wishes to promote the use of such practices to its residents. Further, let it be resolved that I, Matt Brawley, Village President, dear, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as Rain Barrel Month in the Village of Montgomery.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, move on to the consent agenda this evening. I'll read the items and entertain a motion. Minutes of the Village Board Meeting of April 13, executive session minutes of April 13, the building report from March 2015, accounts payable through April 16, 2015, appointment by the Village President of Jason Bragg to the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners for a term May 1, 2015, through April 30, 2018, and Ordinance 1666, amending Section 12 of the Village zoning ordinance regarding ground signs. And that's a second reading.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, move on to the consent agenda this evening. I'll read the items and entertain a motion. Minutes of the Village Board Meeting of April 13, executive session minutes of April 13, the building report from March 2015, accounts payable through April 16, 2015, appointment by the Village President of Jason Bragg to the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners for a term May 1, 2015, through April 30, 2018, and Ordinance 1666, amending Section 12 of the Village zoning ordinance regarding ground signs. And that's a second reading.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, move on to the consent agenda this evening. I'll read the items and entertain a motion. Minutes of the Village Board Meeting of April 13, executive session minutes of April 13, the building report from March 2015, accounts payable through April 16, 2015, appointment by the Village President of Jason Bragg to the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners for a term May 1, 2015, through April 30, 2018, and Ordinance 1666, amending Section 12 of the Village zoning ordinance regarding ground signs. And that's a second reading.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
And that carries 5-0. Thank you. Item A, for separate action, is Ordinance 1665, granting a special use for a convalescent nursing and rest home located at 2231 Hagaman Lane and Bethesda Lutheran Communities. With that, I'll ask Director Young if he has any, anything to add or a summary from last time.
Okay, thank you, President Brawley. Since our last meeting on April 13, we have again contacted the Department of Human Services and requested more thorough evaluation. They reported that they, in fact, will be required to have the fire clearance inspection done by the state fire marshal, and that DHS itself will also do their own independent inspection. If it's determined that improvements such as ramps or other improvements are needed for handicap accessibility or other issues, then permits would be required. That's incorporated into the text of the ordinance. As you might recall, last time when we talked about this special use, we added in language that we would have to seek compliance with the building code if such structures were needed to be incorporated into the property. Also, this does not change any of the requirements in terms of the zoning ordinance and what we've determined is required in terms of the special use. So, we'd recommend that you approve the item tonight as is. The text is appropriate for building code compliance if it's required in the future. We requested from DHS a letter in writing. They refused to do that. They said they would not do that, but there has been an email correspondence that can be provided. So, with that, I'd recommend approval.
Any questions for staff?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
And that carries 5-0. Thank you. Ordinance 1661, amending the Village of Montgomery Village Code, Chapter 3, Section 3 through 9, for Taqueria La Esquina. And this is the waiver of first and passage on the second reading. We tabled this from the March 9 board meeting.
Yes. Since that time, since we asked you to table it, the building owner and the tenant have worked together to correct the issues inside. They have sealed up the entrance to the staircase there, and so at this time, we brought it back to you for consideration. With that, we'd answer any questions you may have.
Chief, do you have anything?
No. I went there last week and saw the door. That path has been now secured, and I also talked to the pastor, and he's happy with the situation.
Thank you.
Okay. No other comments or questions? Entertained a motion?
Motioned.
Moved.
Moved by Trustee Marisak, second by Trustee Heinz. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Thank you. That carries 5-0. Moving on, item C, the 2015 Proposed Street Maintenance Program. With that, I'll turn it over to Director Public Works, Mike Povens.
Thank you, President Brawley. In your packet tonight is our recommendation for the 2015 Street Maintenance Program. You can see the streets listed for resurfacing Red Fox Run, Ridgemont Court, Lafayette Street, and Sherman Avenue. You can see also that we've got some engineering costs that are built into this, but this will be our typical street maintenance program using available MFT funds. This does not include any of the infrastructure repair funds that we'll be building as part of the sales tax referendum that was passed. We'll start collecting those later this year, and we'll accumulate those over the winter, and you'll see those go out onto projects in the street next year. So, probably a substantially bigger program next year. We did use the new pavement management system that we've been developing with Engineer Wallers and EEI to determine these streets. That, we don't have all the fine tuning on that program yet, and I know Engineer Wallers will be presenting that to you later this summer. Again, we want to make sure we've got things dialed in just right before we bring that forward. But again, we're confident that these streets are certainly worthy of repair and would meet the typical criteria that we use. So, we're really looking for consensus tonight to move forward on the design, bidding, and award of this work. Be happy to take any questions.
I appreciate you bringing this stuff to us early in the season, so that way we have adequate time to bid it out and go for.
I'd like to mention, there's a location map in your packet, too, that shows the four streets located. They're both on the right half of the page. You can see, again, Sherman Avenue from Douglas to Lafayette, Lafayette from Montgomery to Sherman, Ridgemont from Red Fox Run to the end, and then Red Fox Run, those last two in Seasons Ridge Boulevard, the others off the Douglas Road, Montgomery Road corridor.
If we didn't pass that referendum last year, this would have been hard to imagine that we're doing a tiny sliver. This, we've been working on Seasons Ridge for a number of years now in a row, when we would have had no funding for this large, vast area out to the west. So, it's kind of a...
Right. We've been working on next year's program, again, with the idea that we want to get bids and lettings done early next year. So, Pete Staff is starting to prepare to, you know, do design engineering work, and again, that'll all come to you a little bit, just down the road a little bit, no pun intended, down the road. But again, we're still in the process of starting to collect those funds, the infrastructure repair. And again, you'll see a bigger program next year. But this one is kind of our carryover, in the transition year between what we've been working with and what we've got in the future.
Okay. Any questions for staff on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Bond, second by Trustee Marisak. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
And that carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, item D, Professional Services Agreement with EEI for Briar Cliff Road, Agency, Briar Cliff, sorry, Briar Cliff Road, local agent, I was just thinking Laffo. I'll just say Laffo. Funway, roadway improvements, design engineering in the amount of $48,372. With that, I will turn it over to Director Povens.
Yes, thank you. This is a project that we've had, we've been working through the Kane County Council of Mayors. The Transportation Policy Committee, which I sit on, recommends to the full council funding for these projects. And as we talked about at our last meeting, this project was originally two or more years out. At the last meeting we had, within the last month, I requested that this project be moved forward to next construction season, and after consideration, the Transportation Committee made that recommendation. The full council has adopted that. So, Briar Cliff Road resurfacing, short story is Briar Cliff Road resurfacing will take place, not this summer, but next summer in 2016. So, that's a nice improvement, and thank you for bringing that up, trustee.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As you can see in the packet is our typical professional services agreement, just with Engineering Enterprises, in the amount of $48,372, and it's for the design engineering. So, this is again to prepare the plans and prepare the project for bidding, which will be done next spring. Again, it's a pretty standard type of agreement that we've used in the past for this sort of work. So, with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Any questions?
Laffo is local agency functional overlay.
I couldn't say.
Pretty much resurfacing. Used to be called LAP.
I tried.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
That carries 5-0. Last item for separate action, we have another professional services agreement with EEI for the Mill Street Bridge, Phase 2, which is design, and Phase 3, which is construction. Engineering agreement in the amount of $69,913. And I'll, go ahead.
Again, similar type of professional services agreement, and approved. We'll be asking Engineering Enterprises to do the, what's called Phase 2, which is the design engineering, and Phase 3, which is construction engineering. So, design engineering is preparing the plans, specifications, estimates, and then construction engineering is administering the contract and overseeing the work once the contract has been awarded. Earlier this year, the village approved an agreement to do what's called a bridge condition report. That's an analysis by structural experts on what type of work needs to be done. That has been completed, so as we said, the next step is to prepare plans and specs and to award the work so we can build it. Tentative construction date for this is shortly after the completion of Montgomery Fest, because we will have to close down Mill Street Bridge to do this work. So, we don't have a set date right now. It'll depend on letting dates and award dates, et cetera, but it'll be second half of August, early fall, when this work will be done. So, it'll be completed this year.
Is there a projected timeline for how long the bridge will be closed?
I believe it was 30 days. I don't know if we have the schedule. I don't think we included the schedule, but Pete, you recall, my recollection was about 30 days construction time.
That sounds about right. I can double check that for you.
Generally, the top few inches of the deck material, the concrete will be removed, rebar will be cleaned and repaired if necessary, recoded. It'll get a new surface. We're looking at the parapits and the arch pieces that hang on the outside. So, that's the majority of the type of work that'll be done, so.
Okay. There's no other comment?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
And that carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, item D, Professional Services Agreement with EEI for Briar Cliff Road, Agency, Briar Cliff, sorry, Briar Cliff Road, local agent, I was just thinking Laffo. I'll just say Laffo. Funway, roadway improvements, design engineering in the amount of $48,372. With that, I will turn it over to Director Povens.
Yes, thank you. This is a project that we've had, we've been working through the Kane County Council of Mayors. The Transportation Policy Committee, which I sit on, recommends to the full council funding for these projects. And as we talked about at our last meeting, this project was originally two or more years out. At the last meeting we had, within the last month, I requested that this project be moved forward to next construction season, and after consideration, the Transportation Committee made that recommendation. The full council has adopted that. So, Briar Cliff Road resurfacing, short story is Briar Cliff Road resurfacing will take place, not this summer, but next summer in 2016. So, that's a nice improvement, and thank you for bringing that up, trustee.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As you can see in the packet is our typical professional services agreement, just with Engineering Enterprises, in the amount of $48,372, and it's for the design engineering. So, this is again to prepare the plans and prepare the project for bidding, which will be done next spring. Again, it's a pretty standard type of agreement that we've used in the past for this sort of work. So, with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Any questions?
Laffo is local agency functional overlay.
I couldn't say.
Pretty much resurfacing. Used to be called LAP.
I tried.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
And that carries 5-0. Last item for separate action, we have another professional services agreement with EEI
So we're off to a good start. The last year, again, there's an adjustment that happens monthly, and that, you know, has put us underwater by, by a bit. But currently, if those, those residents in Northern Illinois who are purchasing their power from Commonwealth Edison are paying in, in April and in May, eight point one cents, and your rate is just a hair underneath it at seven point nine four cents. So what we're talking about tonight is that program that we put in place a year ago is coming due, and we need to make a decision within about a month to renew that program. The Commonwealth Edison rate will be coming out in about three to four weeks from now, so that's kind of the benchmark, that's what we all like to benchmark against. And pretty shortly, very quickly, after that rate comes out, we would like to have a bid scheduled in place, bring the results, and then have a decision made. We, it'll be, it'll be a timely decision, as we're kind of, the renewal period that we have is coming to a close shortly after that ComEd rate comes out. Just to give you an indication, I can't project the future for a lot of things, but we have a little bit of a window of the new ComEd rate. Again, the new ComEd rate is released annually for a twelve-month period of time, it is reset once during, a second time, so it comes out basically for June one, and then September one, they have the ability to reset that rate. So that's a little bit of a moving target, we know some of it, we expect that rate to be somewhere, it's currently seven point six cents per kilowatt hour, excuse me, it's eight point one, but the, but the base rate before that monthly adjustment is seven point six cents, we expect it to drop actually just a little bit. We said seven three, but that's a little conservative, we really think it's going to be closer to seven four, seven five, is what we project the rate's going to be for the next twelve months. As we've been, we've already done, I think, three or four renewals yet this season, each community gets its own unique price based upon its load factor, so, so your neighbor may be similar, but if you were to go to bid with another municipality right next door to you on the same day, you won't get the exact same prices. It seems a little unusual, but each community has its own profile, which dictates its own pricing. We're estimating that, again, based on what we think the market will be, that we think that we'll be able to beat the ComEd rate by a little bit, but just to give you an idea, we think it's going to be in the neighborhood of somewhere there at two tenths of a cent. So it's, it's close, but it would offer savings if those numbers come in. Interestingly enough, next year, we expect another decrease, so we'll, we'll be hopeful we're right about that. Just quickly, I'll let you ask, I know you all have some questions probably, but some of the intangible benefits that we've seen of the program, obviously, you know, we love to save money and quantify that, that's spectacular, but what we will tell you is some of the intangibles, the, the ComEd rate, again, is reset twice a year, and then there's a monthly adjustment up to a half cent, positive or negative. In other words, it moves around a lot, and it's essentially been almost lost as the benchmark rate anymore, nobody knows what the ComEd rate is today, because it moves so much, it's, should say it's very hard to under, to stay in touch, in touch with. Because of that and some other issues, we've heard some residents say that they are, when, when we talk to them about a community's program, they find out when the community's running it, they say, oh, well, that's good, because I don't understand it, I was, back in the day before we deregulated, the ComEd was everything, now we've deregulated, I don't understand, I've got all these people calling me, there's all these different charges, they change, if the community's doing it, that's great, because I know that they have professionals and their own eyes looking at it, and so I don't have to deal with it, I don't have to really address the guy who's knocking on my door trying to sell me power. And finally, all the programs that we have in the aggregation programs, every resident is informed by mail before any change is made to his account, he's had, they have the opportunity to opt out at that point in time, but if they are on vacation, if they toss that particular letter, they, they can opt out anytime they want. So there is no requirement for a resident to continue in the program if, for whatever reason, at any time, he, he or she chooses that there may be a better opportunity out there. They are free to go, there's no penalties to, to come or go in our programs. So again, what we are, just kind of giving a little reintroduction to this, but the renewal program will be coming up, we will have some timing issues, so I think in the past, what the board has done is, has delegated that decision to either staff or the mayor or whomever to make a decision, because commodity markets are a, it's like, it's like one of the other commodity, the electric market is like a commodity, it's moving around, the pricing changes, you know, minute by minute. When we get our pricing, it's generally good for about a day or two, and so it's hard to come back to, to the village boards to schedule it at the, at the appropriate time. So what we will ask is, and we'll have this for you next time, I mean, we already have the resolution in place authorizing that from the last couple of times we've done it.
I think we've redone that each time we bid, Dave.
Okay, we can bring that.
Staff will bring before you a resolution, actually giving the village administrator that authority to agree on terms and to sign an agreement.
And then, yeah, so we'll have that probably at the next meeting, would be my guess.
Very soon, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have that for you, and then, and then as soon as that ComEd rate comes out, we'd like to, we'd like to move quickly for you to make a decision. Again, your decision is, is to accept one of the bids, or to say, thank you, no thanks, we'll go back to Commonwealth Edison, and you'll have that choice, and then we'll implement whatever that choice is. I've done enough talking.
I believe you answered my question, the person doesn't have to switch and comment to you.
So, so if someone's in the program, a resident's in the program, they, and if they have taken no action, they will automatically participate in the program, okay? They're given the opportunity to opt out, they, they're sent a letter, they said, this is our program, if you do nothing, you will be included in the program. If you want to opt out, just sign this card here, and you'll stay at ComEd or, yeah.
You get them cards in the mail?
Correct. And by the way, if any resident...
I'm sticking with ComEd.
Yeah, that's absolutely fine. And if any resident has made a choice to go to another supplier, they can go to another supplier. So every resident gets to make that own decision.
Thank you.
I think it, well, go ahead. I think it works great that the community, because like Mike said, two years ago, when I was twenty, thirty dollars a month savings, I had all kinds of people say how great a job it was. Last year, it was close, like you said, and sometimes less. And the basic thing, I guess, a question for staff is, do utilities have the right to come around door to door, or without a permit or whatever? Because there was a whole bunch of them that came around, and they were just confusing people. They'd say, hey, we know the village did this, but you know what, I'm gonna offer you a better rate right now, and sign it here, and, and it got very confused, and these guys would come around on Saturday and at noon, they'd come around Sundays, they, at night, it'd be pitch dark, and some guy's knocking on your door. Luckily, my doors, I only used the back door, and these guys were knocking on the front door, and later my neighbor said, did you see that guy that was trying to sell me different electric? It's just, do we have ordinances to keep, or can, what's the...
Well, I would... I, I can actually, I recall this when it happened, I think it happened two years ago, and they were somehow slightly misrepresenting the rhetoric in which they were using, and I believe that Steve Anderson contacted them, and they had to go back to all of the people that had signed contracts, and it wasn't a lot, and offer them an opt-out of that contract because they were misrepresented, that they were the village's, they were, I think the term they used is, the, the village is allowing us to offer this. Well, the village isn't doing anything, you're allowed to offer it because you're a business. They, they represented like they were the village's aggregate, and they weren't, so...
And these are the ones that are coming now, I mean, it's not the same as you, you came in here a little early, these guys have been coming in now, not just two years ago. And I think two years ago, we proved to everybody we could save them money. But boy, the last couple of months, those guys have been all over, actually, the last five, six months, they've been all over the village.
Rich, do we give permits, that kind of thing?
I believe that they would be required to get a solicitor's license, or permit, from the village before they could go door to door, as Penn indicated, so.
Okay.
We've had, I know that Justin's folks have had calls in the past, I haven't heard about it recently, but last year, they were definitely getting calls, and, and there was a lot of confusion, and I don't think all of those companies always had a solicitor's permit.
Okay. Our deputy village clerk works with the police department when, when someone comes in to apply for, for a solicitor's permit, so they should have one.
This might be one of those great opportunities, I know Debbie's been doing this now with the, when the people do come in, she posts it on Facebook, that these people have been issued permits, this might be a great opportunity to say, there are no permits issued for this. This is, if anybody is knocking on your door, this is the village's company, so don't be misled.
And if I can clarify, our program, we only contact residents through the mail, period. We do not make phone calls, and we do not make door to door, you know, presentations. So it is exclusively through the mail is the only form of contact that the village's supplier will contact. And if I also might just caution, the way they, the way that the ICC and Commonwealth Edison have set the, the system in place, is that if a supplier, through phone or whatever means necessary, is able to get a resident's ComEd account number, that's all they need to convert the resident to that new supplier. They don't need to get anything in writing, they don't need to get approval, they can represent that however they want to represent that, but...
Can't do that.
An unethical supplier could, if they were to take a look at somebody's bill or whatever, if they could memorize the number or write it down, that is enough to go and transition that resident to a new supplier. Now, Commonwealth Edison, a week later, will follow up with a form letter saying they've been instructed to move, I'm not sure if the average resident really appreciates that, the clarity of that, but that's the, that's the fabric. So the only caution I would say, if you are communicating with residents, is just to say, guard your account number.
Don't give your account number to anybody.
Don't let them look at your bill, don't...
That, and that, now that you said that, that is what happened.
Oh, yeah.
Some residents, they said, well, just show us your bill, and, and we'll tell you whether we can save you money or not, and they were getting the number off of it.
Right. They don't need to see their bill. They, they know the rates, the rates are public rates, they don't need to see bill, so.
I do have one practical question on the aggregation. The, if we go out for bids, and the bids are a lot higher than ComEd, and we choose not to renew, what's the implication on the aggregation program going forward?
So basically, what you do is you would suspend it indefinitely, and we'd take another look at it a year later. The residents would get a letter from Commonwealth Edison, again, one of these letters that would say, we've been instructed that we want you, that we've been instructed to move your account from your current supplier back to Commonwealth Edison, we just wanted to notify you of that. Then on the next, well, it's actually two bills later, that's going to be the same bill, it's going to look exactly the same, if they get out a little magnifying glass and see the energy line, it'll say it's provided by Commonwealth Edison, you know, instead of, instead of your supplier.
And we wouldn't have to vote to, or the residents wouldn't have to vote to approve it at referendum again?
No, that is correct. So referendum is, you know, in depth, essentially quasi-permanent, so no.
Okay.
At the end, then if you wanted to reinstate it a year later, we would go through just the bid cycle again, it would, you would have the opportunity to do that, then we'd just have to work on a little PR to make sure that the residents know what's going on.
Yeah, excellent. Okay.
I do have one question. On this...
Yes, sir.
Document, there's an asterisk up at the top that says, ComEd rate includes supply, transmission, and PEA. Is that not included in the aggregate rate?
The PEA is only charged to residents that purchase their power through Commonwealth Edison, okay? Aggregations are not charged to PEA.
Okay.
Okay, and charged or credited, I'll just say this, that adjustment happens every month, it's a half-cent swing, positive or negative, it can swing either way, that's the PEA.
What about the supply and transmission portion?
Supply is energy, that, that, that is set at Commonwealth Edison, once a year, with, with one reset, you know, for them to reset it once during that period of time, so it's reset, basically, I'll say it's twice a year. The transmission charges are fixed, those are regulated charges, and those are in place for, you know, about three years forward.
And those are included in your fee?
Yes.
And discussed?
Correct. Correct.
I could just add a few things, just to clarify, Dave doesn't represent any individual supplier, Dave is our representative, he manages this program, he and his staff at NYMEC manage the program. The village pays no direct cost to Dave, we, our residents are not charged extra because of that, it is included, I believe, in the, the bid number, so that's how NYMEC is supported financially, but there's no direct payment from any of our residents to NYMEC, so very cost effective. Getting back to the PEA, and that's really been the, what I found to be the most, one of the most challenging parts of this, is we don't know if that PEA on a monthly, month by month basis is going to be plus half a cent, or minus half a cent to the ComEd rate. And if you look on this bar chart, it shows the dashed line being our rate, and the bars being the ComEd rate, that, those are all instances where the PEA was minus half a cent. So our rate was actually better than the initial rate with the PEA adjustment, and Dave and I have talked, shaken our heads many times, if you look at the PEA history, before we went to this bid, you would see that it was predominantly adding fifty cents. So at the time, we thought, well, we're on, on firm footing with this. So it came in, what, eight months in a row lower, and that's why we ended up having a slightly higher rate than ComEd. So that's one of the challenges, and it will continue to be one of the challenges, we can't predict whether that PEA will be up or down. Again, one of the, I think the big benefits of this program is, it is completely optional if someone decides they don't care for our rate because the PEA's gone the other way, they can go back to ComEd, they can go to any of a number of other suppliers, it's pretty much an open market. But we think the consistency of pricing and the consistency of billing is a benefit to people for budgeting, for simplicity, et cetera, but again, the option is always there for any one of the residents of Montgomery to say, no, thank you, and get out of it, with no penalty.
And what's the timeline when you opt out?
It depends on your meter cycle, when that, your individual meter cycle is, but it's approximately forty-five days for, for that to convert over.
Okay. If there are no other questions, we'll...
I'm sorry, I do, just...
Yeah.
Sorry, writing. So Mike, just to clarify, a resident can opt out at any time?
Correct.
With no fee.
With no fee. And then we're obligated, if we continue with this, we're obligated then for a year, until we bid again?
Could be a longer term, it depends, we usually go for a one, two, and three-year bids, I think, is what we've asked for.
Okay.
And then it's up to us to decide which one we think is most beneficial to our residents. I think currently, we're in a two-year.
We started off on a two-year, and then the last time, we did a one-year.
We did a one-year last time, thank you. So again, a lot of it just depends on how those bid numbers come in for the out years. Again, there's, there's certainly some uncertainty, that is certain, it's uncertain, as to what it's going to be in two years, in three years, and again, Dave can bring in any number of charts that show the volatility, volatility of electricity pricing, so, but to answer your, your question, it can be any term from a year or more.
And that's just when we do that resolution to allow you...
Right.
...to accept a bid, it's, you're making that decision, obviously have to do it very quickly, so that's when you're making the decision on what's the best pricing, and that determines how long...
Correct.
Okay.
We'll see the one, two, three-year, and decide what we think's the best.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't see how you can, a person get in if they don't say they don't want in. I, I've been getting into before, and I am not going to get in it again.
That's fine.
But let me finish, we got our bill from ComEd? We got our bill from ComEd, that you get the money from ComEd, they do our repairs, so why switch? That's the way I look at it.
Because you might be able to pay less for electricity, that's the only reason, trustee, and not everybody thinks that's, there's a value in that, so. And the reason that people are included in it is because, as a village, we passed a resolution several years ago saying that we supported this program. But again, that's why there's the opt-out feature, so.
The residents voted that in a referendum to join.
The residents voted that, thank you.
And...
If I can clarify, I think you said there were two reasons you like staying with ComEd, is you get your bill from ComEd and they repair your wires.
Yeah, and I don't see where people can get the right to, if I don't sign something, you can make me go to your, go with you, I don't think that's right.
Okay. I appreciate that. First of all, with our program, we, you get the bill from ComEd?
Correct.
And with our program, ComEd continues to repair the wires. So, if there's any outages, so there's no difference whatsoever, it's just the line item and the price of the energy. Now, you raise a good point, and the point is, if I, if you don't want to participate in this, you have to take positive action to opt out of the program. I appreciate that that's not your choice.
But you shouldn't be able to force anybody to take that program and have them send a, you send them a card and they got to write it off? No, you shouldn't be able to force a person to do that.
And, and I don't have the power to do that. So, the state of Illinois set the, set the program up that way. That's just municipal aggregation per the legislation in Springfield. So, you, I appreciate that, I've heard this before, I appreciate your concern. We can't do anything about that. The only thing we can do is disband the program. If the whole, if everybody felt the exact same way, you would just disband the program and stay at Commonwealth Edison. But the aggregation program, the rules set up by the state of Illinois and the legislation from Springfield, it's an opt-out program, that's what they call it. So, the program is put in place on the behalf of everybody and then anybody who wants to opt out, for good or for bad, the opt-out rates are generally around 2%. So, most people, whether they know what they're doing or not, continue in the program, but, but it has the option for you to opt out and, and what'll be nice for you this time? The state of Illinois said now they have to put a stamped envelope in the mail. You used to have to fill something out and actually put your own stamp on it and mail it in, now it'll be pre-stamped for you.
But if I understand correctly from the conversation, is, you guys didn't do this, the state didn't do this, our residents chose to have this option? And it's all became part, as part of the deregulation, correct?
Well, so, if I can, just to clarify...
Previously, we didn't have a choice, you had ComEd.
Yes, so prior to '08, it was, ComEd was one-stop shopping. We deregulated in '08 and this municipal aggregation legislation came into existence in 2011. Because the first three years of deregulation, the switching from residents taking advantage of this was minimal. So, Springfield said, "Well, let's make it available." And because at the time, the first, you know, from, you know, from '08 all the way through '11, there was great savings. When we started this, I think we were about 30% savings to the ComEd, the electric rates, is that, and so for three years, that just, you know, dissipated because nobody was moving. So, the state of Illinois said, "Let's empower the municipalities to do this on behalf of the residents." And that's when, you know, so we got the last couple of years, it would have been, I mean, it's hindsight, but it would have been nice if we would have had the legislation in place earlier, but we won't second-guess Springfield on that one.
Okay. Are there any other comments? We will likely see a resolution to act on in May, so we can go out to rebid unless, and then, the board can decide at that time if we want to pass or not pass that resolution, but we've seen $1.5 million in savings locally from this, so I would encourage us to stay at it and see what the bids are, at least go out to bid.
At least look at it.
Yep.
Are you saying, though, basically because of the price of energy, you think it's going to go down? So, really, we'd be better off just taking a one-year bid like we did last time?
Well, since you have renewed a year ago, the commodity market for power has dropped, number one. So, that's, we're looking at a lower, a lower rate environment than before. The safe way is to go one year. We know that some of the regulated charges that are embedded in that number that we're talking about here, some of the regulations, we know there's going to be a big drop a year from now. So, if the power markets, hypothetically, the commodity markets were going to stay the same, we would see a quarter to a half-cent drop in the ComEd rate next year. So, because the marketers see that, that's part of their component, they will offer you a lower rate if you take a two-year deal.
Two years, okay.
Now, that's a judgment call and, because you'll, you'll enjoy that drop if you do two one-year deals, it's not like it's going to go away. But, you know, then you kind of make a judgment call of where, where are we in the power cycle, where, you know, where are the commodities, are they up-down, is oil, you know, going to go up or down? And it could be a bird in the hand, I'll let, I'll let you, you know, we'll talk about that, we'll talk about that down the day and I'll give you as much insight as I can, but at the end, it's a, it's a judgment call.
Thank you.
Just so you know, in the short term at least, Director Van Vorn will be assuming the role of liaison with NYMEC, and he performed that role in Sugar Grove, so he has worked with them before, but he'll be taking that over from Director Poobens.
And he's excited.
Absolutely.
You're welcome, Justin, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on to item B, for newer unfinished business, we have the Webster Street Crossing. With that, I'll ask Engineer Wallers for a summary.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting, Trustee Bond inquired as to the status of the Webster Street Crossing. So, tonight, I'd like to give an update on where we're at and discuss a little bit about strategy as to what we might want to do going forward. So, I called the folks that I've been working with at ICC, the Rail Safety Specialist, and was informed that we were not on the, you know, we had applied for rail safety funding for the crossing repair, we were not included in the program this year for the BNSF, which was disappointing. So, I asked what options we have as far as making, making a more compelling case to get our, our crossing repaired. So, the person from ICC recommended a couple of things. First, he said that the ICC maintains a website where you can file online a complaint, and Jeff has brought up the Complaint Wizard. Now, I went online last week as a private citizen and made a complaint. And so, when you, when you go through the process, and I sent the link to Jeff and to Debbie and I thought, if, if the board is in agreement, you could include it in, on the website, you can include it in the newsletter. But the basic idea is that you go on, you type your name and address in, you can be, you can put your position, it could be, in my case, I did as a private citizen, but you could do village trustee, village president, whatever. And then, there's four or five boxes that you can check, depending on what the condition is. So, the one I checked was rough crossing surface, but they have excessive gate or flashing light operation, weeds or brush overgrown, blockage or other. So, you have a number of things to choose from. So, you go through that process and, and then you file the complaint, you know, as an online complaint. And I got a response back, probably automated, but I got a response back almost immediately saying, "Thank you for your complaint, we'll be out to check the, the crossing." So, and they had asked me to send them some digital photos, which I did. So, I think it would be a good, you know, thing to campaign a little bit on, on the condition of our crossing. I don't know if it guarantees it will get it fixed, but at least it would, I think, help draw attention to it. So, that would be one thing I'd recommend. The second thing that the ICC guy recommended is a little bit more, we had sent letters to ICC and to the Burlington Northern Railroad indicating that the crossing needed repair. He thought it might be a good idea if we engaged our state representatives to also send letters in on our behalf to ask them to repair the crossing. So, I have drafted a sample that we can use to distribute to the, to our representatives. I think it would be appropriate for the mayor to make the request to the state reps, but I think that would be a good, another good campaign element here. And then, of course, the mayor should send another letter, you know, imploring that the crossing be repaired. So, at least we would get as much exposure, you know, kind of the squeaky wheel type approach to the, to the crossing. I will say, I drive that crossing on my way to work, on my way home, and every time I come to the village hall for a meeting, so I, I'm there a lot. The, it has two mainline crossings and it has one service rail. The service rail, I think, is the worst, but I did inquire as to whose responsibility that is, and that is still the Burlington Northern Santa Fe, so all three tracks are at BNSF, because I wasn't sure if the, if the Burlington Junction had any say in the trackage, but they don't. So, I think we're good concentrating on the Burlington Northern Santa Fe. And I have the address of that person to send those requests to, that's the manager of Public Projects, so I'll get that information to Jeff and to, you know, the village so that we can follow that. So, that would be what I'd recommend, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Is that more of Burlington or ICC?
Well, Burlington actually is the responsible party, they're responsible to repair their crossing. The ICC has some matching funds that they'll provide to the BNSF if it gets on the BNSF program. But from my discussion with ICC, it's really the BNSF that has to assign this to, you know, a current project, and that's really what we want to do.
Does a Burlington have a phone number, or not really?
Uh...
I was yesterday, in the cloakroom of our church, this 85-year-old gentleman came up and just ripped me about the crossing and, "Give me a phone number for the Burlington," and I'm going, "Oh, boy, this is fun."
I will send...
He doesn't do computers, so...
I have the contact for its, the manager of Public Projects, I've got his email and his phone number, I'd be happy to...
Okay.
Thank you.
Would it be possible to display that number near that crossing as a temporary sign for a short period?
I was actually thinking of a laptop at Montgomery Fest where people could actually dial in and log their complaint right there.
Like a two-week temporary sign exhibition, or?
Right, chief.
I hope it's fixed by Montgomery Fest, because that, that thing...
Well, I wouldn't...
I mean, your, your left tire hits it and it drops six inches, and then your right tire hits it and it drops a foot, and you watch the cars going over. I'm waiting for a car to get damaged, I mean, it's bad.
You can imagine a motorcycle trying to cross that.
There is a phone number on the, just north of the intersection there at the tracks in Webster, right on the side of the building.
Oh, okay.
So, feel free to call that, absolutely.
Thank you, thanks, Pete. One comment that I have is, I don't think people really understand or realize, correct me if I'm wrong, what little authority we actually have, it's Burlington Northern right-of-way that our road happens to cross. Usually, we're the opposite, where it's our right-of-way that people have easements in. They granted us this, however many years ago, so. We can do, can we do minor pothole filling in an emergency situation, or not really?
Technically, we're not allowed to work within their right-of-way without meeting their requirements, which is real liability insurance.
Okay. So, when we, basically, sending letters and complaining is the most that we can do on this, so we should, we should actively do that, so. Thank you. And thanks for teaching us how to complain on a website.
And this sounds like another Facebook project. This is another great use for social media, you know? They already, they obviously already have a computer in front of them, so.
Let's say one thing about the form which is a little confusing, when you, when you check the box that you want and you send it, when you get your print back and you print it out, it doesn't highlight what you sent in. So, I have to admit, I sent it in twice because I wasn't sure, but when I got the response back, it clearly said yes for the rough crossing. So, if you're doing it, that's just a bit of, you know, you might, some of you may want to try it out and you may experience that, so.
It may have been inaccurate, you should probably send in a third.
Well, it may have to be.
All right. Are there any other items for new or unfinished business?
I have a couple of items. Just wanted to give an update on Rotary. We now have provisional club status, we're on our way to chartering. We've received several applications and we've filled several of our officer positions. We also have a service project coming up in May, which is going to be Feed My Starving Children. And one of the other places that we will be working with for service projects would be Hasset House, and I took a tour of that facility last week, yes, last week. And we'll continue to meet, obviously, Thursday morning, 7:00 AM. One of the other things I attended was the dedication of the Oswego Fire Protection District's Training Campus. I had the opportunity to actually tour the facility and it already smelled like a charcoal grill at that point. But it was kind of interesting to go through that, and I was speaking actually with Jason Bragg, he's one of the trustees on their Board of Director, and we walked through the whole thing and he, he just kind of explained everything. And a couple of comments that I think that we all should know in case we get questions, they're only burning natural materials over there, for example, hay and pallets, so there won't be any type of chemical, any chemicals burned there, so there shouldn't be an issue with the smoke or anything like that. And the other, other issue I think that was really important, everything on the first floor, every entryway is secured. So, it's on a lockout-tagout system, so there's not any way for someone to get in on the first floor, not that they'd want to, once, especially once they start using it, because it'll be so dirty with the soot and the smell. So, but it was really interesting and, like I said, I don't know if you could still tour it now, because I don't know if they've started using it. And lastly, I attended the fundraiser for Traffic Free, and that was something that the chief had sent to us, that was last weekend, and that was put together by a Montgomery resident, Haley Pacina. She's been interning with that organization, it's a nonprofit. They had great food and prizes and they had a really interesting presentation, and their fundraising efforts are to build or to secure a 24-hour drop-in center, and that, it's going to be located in Chicago. And I, I brought some information, if anyone is interested, I've got some extra brochures here for the board. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other items?
I had a question about solicitor's permits, particularly in view of the discussion about the soliciting going on earlier. My thought is this, it seems that in many cases, a solicitor asks for a permit in the name of the company for whom they're selling and not in the name of the company who has actually employed them. And I'm thinking it's more fair to our residents if what's on that badge is the name of who is employing them, not the favorite image of the brand they're trying to market. So, when they knock on your door and say, "I'm from IBM or Apple," they're not really from those companies, they're from a door-to-door, quite possibly, sales organization. I would value some thought about that.
Yeah, I think we'd want to like, take a look at the ordinance as to how it reads now, I can't tell you from memory, and it may well be, you want both on there. But we can certainly take a look at that.
I know when we pursued some past complaints, we discovered that the company being represented was not the employer of those people, it was, in fact, a door-to-door sales company. And I think the public has a right to know who's at their doorstep.
A lot of times, they have a badge just with the name of the company and you ask them if they have a permit and they tell you somebody else has got it. And I did this probably six years ago, I grabbed the guy's badge off of his pants and it was out of Addison, and I said, "Okay, we got no problem, then, you just go get the guy and I'll trade your badges." And he didn't have one, and so then he came back later, his boss did, and demanded the badge back. But it was, that's what they do, and it's just ridiculous as far as that, the hours they do it. I mean, before, at least it was daylight and at least it wasn't on a weekend, but, boy, they're just getting ridiculous.
I had someone who, and this was actually a couple of years ago, came to the door and said, "Well, here's my, here's my Aurora solicitor's permit." And I said, "Well, you're not..." And I said, "Well, you're not in Aurora," and they shut up, "Okay, thank you," and off you went.
So maybe at a future meeting, we could bring that back to the agenda.
That's a great idea. All right, if there's nothing else, you can see the future meetings. One thing to note, the Intergovernmental Committee meeting and Village Board meeting will be on Tuesday, May 26, that's the day after Memorial Day, so we'd be happy to be here. That'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for three reasons, to discuss collective negotiating matters pursuant to 5ILCS 120 over 2C2, and discuss employment of an employee pursuant to 5ILCS 120 over 2C1, and to discuss litigation which is filed and pending pursuant to 5ILCS 120 over 2C11.
So move.
Second.
Roll, please.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And we'll take a five-minute break before we start that.
Okay.
Roll, please.
Trustee Heinz?
Yep.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee? Yes. We're adjourned, thank you.
Thanks, Pete, good to see you.